All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Uh, roll call, Mary.
Here.
Diana.
Here.
Leah.
Here.
Brenda.
I am also here.
A meeting has been privately noticed and certified?
Yes.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
So, I'll second. But we need to remove 7C because we won't have that.
Yep, that's right.
That one.
Diana, you assume you're okay?
Yep.
Okay. Got a motion by Diana, seconded by Leah, to approve the agenda with the exception of 7C. All in favor, aye. Aye, opposed? When are those? Five minutes? Approval of the August 18th, 2014 regular and executive session meeting minutes?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this? Okay. A motion by Diana, seconded by Leah, all in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? Any abstains? Addressing the board, school news.
Um, the new cross crossing guard started today, Tammy Moyer, and she had a police officer with her in the morning and in the afternoon. I know there was a little discussion because they, in the past, I think the crossing guard has kind of directed traffic, and technically, the crossing guard is not supposed to do that, but they're kind of working on how that might work a little better. But Tammy said that after this morning, she said it went good. So, there.
Great.
Up and running with that. As I told you today, I sent out our enrollment, which is kind of, we have ins and outs still being processed. We had kids come in and register today for school. So, and I'm sure we'll get requests for records for students who are registering today or tomorrow somewhere else, too. So, right now, though, even without the 4K counted, we're 31 in enrollment, which are kids actually attending that we're educating here in our district. We're up 31.
Oh, up 31.
Yep.
So, what is that, number 24?
Well, it's actually 2553, and if we took off 4K, it would be 2433.
Okay.
And then, I don't know how many of you saw this, but a number of the administrators, a week ago, we were challenged by the Edgerton admin team to do the ice bucket challenge.
Can we move on?
Yeah.
Any other school news?
And so, last Tuesday at 4:00 in front of the middle school, a number of us brave souls were here, and we had the volleyball team who were getting ready to leave on a bus, and we actually had challenged Mr. Veronic to the ice bucket challenge, and so he kind of got them involved. So, they did the ice bucket challenge on us, to us. So, it was actually kind of fun. But we challenged the school board.
Excellent.
To do the ice bucket challenge.
Do you have the receipt from your donation?
Actually, I do. On an email, I do have my, and technically, I guess you're not, you don't have to donate as much or something, but I don't.
If you get those.
Yes. But I do have my receipt and an email confirmation. I don't know about the others, but I do. And Sarah was really a brave soul.
I saw that.
Like, one volleyball player actually, like, kind of got in between kind of Sarah and Melissa, and Sarah just stood there because she said, "I really didn't get wet." And then she got, like, two whole buckets on her.
So much for that.
Yeah. And we do have it out on our district website, the video, so you can watch it.
Great.
So, I don't know when you guys want to get together, but.
We'll have to talk about that.
And then, last Wednesday, we had the district-wide lunch, and a number of you were there serving lunch, and I think that was, went really well, too. The staff enjoyed it.
Good, good, good. Any other school news? Okay. Oh, yes, blank.
First day of school today around the district, so big day. So, just a little bit about what happened at the high school today. The freshman came in. It's a freshman-only day, so it's kind of, you know, here to help the freshmen ease into kind of a new experience for them. So, they met with their mentors, and their mentors kind of guided them through their high school experience and kind of helped them out, and.
You heard that?
You heard that?
I can't remember if you think it out.
There are so many friends. There are so many.
There are so many. So, we kind of guided them through the school and showed them where to go, and who's here, who's there. Then we went to a little auditor, we went to the auditorium, and all the teachers from each corps kind of did a little play and kind of lightened their day off, so I think it was a good day overall, and tomorrow will be a much different day when everybody else shows up. But there were, I did note, actually, there were a lot of comments on the new bathrooms and how nice they looked, so.
Are they done?
They're, they're done.
What's most important?
Yeah.
Wow!
They do look nice. Well, I mean, they, I didn't see them with the partitions, but.
They're not 100 percent finished. They still need to get mirrors up and wrap the door frame, but they look fantastic, yeah.
Did we save the blue pastel tile?
Um, we still have it in the kitchen.
Excellent.
You like your house.
And then, in athletics, soccer's heading to Edgewood for a big seeding game. Football is 2-0, heading down to Fort Atkinson, trying to make it 3-0. And then volleyball actually just got second place in a tournament this weekend, so that was a good first step for them this season. And then, in music, the band department is doing a big Beach Boys theme for the big Wannakee game halftime performance, and then the choir band orchestra is starting to do the musical work for Guys and Dolls, which is going to be in November. So, school's here.
Great. Thank you for all that.
Swimmers won against Middleton. First time in forever. Six years I've been involved in high school swimming, first time. They've undefeated for four years. So, we're on a motor, going.
Excellent. All right, any other school news?
I just want to add to my report. Tomorrow, if anybody's available, starting at 8:30 at the PC is our PBIS kickoff. So, if anybody's interested in joining us for that, it's at 8:30 at the primary center, all our students and staff. We kick off the year by looking at our trophies, talking about our expectations. We're sharing our school goal of reducing physical contact and fighting and talking about what that looks like and getting the kids pumped up for the red tokens and gold coins and parties. So, that's at 8:30, and then Thursday, we're doing it for the early learning center at 9:00 AM, and that'll be in the ELC gym.
Thank you.
You said at 9:00?
Thursday's at 9:00, tomorrow's at 8:30.
Okay.
I thought the 4K bus situation this morning went beautifully. I was there to meet my child, and it was very cute to watch. They were so little getting off the bus, and then they just trot off to their corner, and I, it looked like it went really well.
Overall, I'm very pleased. And tomorrow, because most of them will now know where they're going in some way, it'll cost so much for us.
Good, good. Do we have any citizens' comments? Any citizen comments? No? Financial business? I'm not sure why this is on here.
There's really no.
Outside of.
Sometimes we have specific things, like with bidding, but there's, it's just a placeholder name.
Okay. Personnel transactions.
Were there any additions today? I'm sorry, let me check my email.
No, we aren't. We're trying to hold to that.
We're trying to hold to the two pages of.
There were a lot of them beginning this.
I'll make a motion to approve the pages that were included with our original board packet.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Diana. Any questions on these? Questions? Obviously, without saying any names, 1C1. Is that because of a full-time offer elsewhere? Do you know?
No, I think he's just.
Just done?
Kind of decided he's done.
Okay. All right, just curious. He's been around for a long time, so. Any other questions on personnel? Seeing none. We've got a motion by Mary, seconded by Diana. All in favor, aye. Aye, opposed? All right. Consent agenda. Are there any reports anyone would like to have pulled out? Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion?
Sold.
Thank you, Mary, Leah. All in favor, aye. Aye, opposed? Okay. I would like to just comment real quick. The administrative reports, one really caught me was Rachel. How did you come up with the idea, and I suppose I should have pulled this out, but it's more of a comment, the idea for the drop-in? I thought that was such a neat idea.
One of my teachers brought it to the table. Her kids do it in the district that her children go to.
Really?
They actually take her steps further. They do all their assessments when their school starts.
Wow.
So, every single kid comes and is, all their assessments are done before the school year begins, and then they have this drop-in opportunity on top of it as an additional opportunity where parents come, spend the time with the teacher, and then the kids go to stations. They actually go see every specials teacher. We just decided to make it two related arts folks, so we can have a little more quality time versus just a quick visit in five minutes. We thought it'd be a little overwhelming for the kids. It went really well. Again, 88% turnout, which is a great turnout for a two-hour commitment. We were really pleased.
Yeah, it looked very, very neat, neat idea. New business, 8A. Consideration of the National FFA Convention trip to Louisville, Kentucky, October 28th through November 1st. Ms. Allen.
Yeah, just a little bit of background. We've done some planning, the FFA officers and advisors, to go to Louisville, Kentucky. It's the 87th National Convention, and there'll be about 60,000 people there. We have a hold on some rooms in Lawrenceburg, Kentucky, and a hold on the bus. And Travis Seerude is one of our senior officers. He's a reporter for our club, and he'd just like to tell you a little bit about some of our activities.
We, I've been going for the last three years. I would like to say that, but we go to career shows. We go to the go-karting track, which is pretty fun. Then we are going to go do a cave tour, and we have, we're going to a concert, and we have the sessions where the speakers talk about how different clubs have changed their lives and how FFA has changed their life. But other than that, it's just a week to have fun with the group, and if we could go, that'd be great.
How many people are going this year, do you know?
We have, we're planning for 30 students in six chaplains plus a bus drive. So, we haven't had an official sign up. The officer team took a survey in the late spring, right before school was out, to try and get a handle on the group side of the summer. A mail letter was sent out this summer, so the students are aware that we'll be planning it soon.
And if memory serves me, the funding comes from the students?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions?
I just have one question. It looks as though the convention is Wednesday, right, from 11:30 till 1:00? I can't figure out when the convention is, sorry. Is it Wednesday, 11:30 to 6:45?
Maybe I should have prepared a different, this was, you know, to help our bus company.
This looks like a really fun trip, and I'm sure there's a convention in there.
We're about an hour out. The convention is so big that all the surrounding town, every hotel, there's people in it. You put your name in a lottery. Last year, we were 15 minutes from the convention center. This year, we're an hour. So, by, we leave at 11:30. That's what that's about. Grab some lunch, and we'll get to the venue about 1:00. And then, we'll stay there at the convention, career show, go to a session, which lasts about an hour and a half. The kids actually, guys and then gals, they'll have to change out of this garb into some more comfortable garb. It's one of the hallmarks of FFA is being able to change your clothes on a bus or in a van, but, and then we'll go to the concert and come back, and then, so every day, we've kind of got something fun planned, but then we've got the FFA convention sessions and instructions and things like that.
So, it's Thursday and Friday, too, or is it just Wednesday?
No. The convention actually starts on Wednesday, and there are, there are three opening sessions because they can't get everybody into the auditorium. It's in the Kentucky Exposition Center, but we're too big. So, they run three sessions that are exactly the same, and then they also have this career show going on simultaneously where Travis can maybe tell you about it, and there's all kinds of universities and schools and companies and people talking about careers in agriculture. It's like a big trade show, but it has a youth bent on it. And so, we'll do that, then we'll go to the session, and which is a big auditorium, and they give out awards and all kinds of things. They also, what's valuable for the students is they have speakers. They have people from business and industry, people from education, lots of time. Well, when I was a, when I was a student, this will date me, I'm sorry, at least I am a fossil, but President Carter came to speak, you know? So, a lot of times, it's really, you know, important people that come and talk to the kids.
8:00 PM. Sorry to interrupt. So, I think the confusion is Wednesday, from the way this reads, it starts at 1:00 and it goes until 8:30, and then there's the Justin Moore concert.
Right. Exactly. We're either all out.
The question is Thursday and Friday. Are there any FFA-sponsored events going on those two days?
Yeah, the, can, the, can then, we'll go back to the venue and the Stars Over America session.
That one at 7:30 PM?
Yeah. Actually, it starts a little bit before then. They have some speakers and, and we, that's the one where the students that have the best programs of experience, like the best in their schoolwork, the best in their work experience, and the best FFA activities, they're featured in a, in a session, and they show videos about what these kids have accomplished.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Sold.
Do we have to make a motion? I thought we decided a while ago we didn't have to do that anymore. It was nice to hear about it, but we didn't need to approve it.
We always have.
I think when they're out of state, they.
I think we're out of state. It's out of state.
We do have to. I thought I remember Keith saying that we should get rid of that.
It's still part of our policy, though.
So, we've got a motion by Leah, seconded by Diana. Any questions? Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, aye. Aye, opposed? Have fun. 8B, policy first reading, suspensions and expulsions. This is like a 1.5 reading, though, isn't it? Because we had it at least drawn to our attention previously.
Yeah, and this actually has gone through policy committee and now wellness committee and gone through WSB attorneys as well as David Rohr, our attorney. So, what you have, to give you kind of some information on what it looks like, is you have diversion with the revisions in it, and then you have a clean, and then you have our two old ones. And both districts around us have really combined them because the law is very similar for suspensions and expulsions, and so it just kind of makes sense to keep them together because a lot of the language is exactly the same from one to the other. So, that's kind of what we've done, but it's gone through kind of a lot of review, I guess I would say. I don't know, Teresa?
The admin council's going to look at it also because we didn't meet for July, and there were a few items on the agenda for the beginning of the school year stuff, so they're going to take a look at it as well. It's been gone through with the final two, calling back the attorney.
And just for clarification, the unmarked copy would be the proposed final?
Right, right.
And then, our two existing then are eliminated?
Or gone. Yep, yep. And at wellness last time, Keith brought up having a hearing officer, which I think he's talked about a little bit before, that possibility or how we might use them. So, I am going to contact neighboring districts when we start meeting again as a group and just ask them, who is using one, and if so, how are they utilizing them? But that kind of, you know, I know it's kind of come up in, in the past, but.
Can we get information on cost as well?
Yeah, I think we do have the cost. Okay.
I have a question on the second page where it starts finally, "A school board shall That sentence and then the very following sentence is like, "We will commence proceedings and expel a pupil," and then the next sentence is like, "Or we won't."
Are you looking at the draft policy, the one that says draft on it, or are you looking at the other one?
They both say it.
I'm looking at page two of the draft policy, and it starts out, "Supervision of a school authority for conduct to that." Is that right?
That's the one I'm looking at.
So, I'm not seeing the sentence that you're saying.
I'm not sure.
Oh, she's, she's not looking at the marked up cut.
Yeah, you are.
Yeah, I am.
Page two, top of page two?
Yes. It's in the middle, right? Finally, "A school board shall commence proceedings."
Oh, after the bullets, yeah.
Yeah, after the bullets. It says, "Finally, a school board shall commence proceedings and expel a pupil for at least one year for possession of firearms, and the board may, however, modify this requirement on a case-by-case basis." So, it's like, "We will, but maybe we won't."
It's how the law's written.
Yeah, I was going to say, I thought that's how illegal.
So, they're going to get expelled, and then it's going to be reviewed and not be expelled?
No, they shall commence proceedings, and in most cases, would expel a pupil for at least one year for possession of firearms. But there, they are, it's primarily because there have been some odd cases where a kid was hunting on Sunday afternoon and didn't realize he had his hunting rifle in the back of his car and didn't really plan on bringing it there, but had it there. There's been individual situations like that, and that's why the law reads that way. So, if you have a case where it was very inadvertent and it just, you know, so you can allow for that, that's the main reason.
And the law's always so clear.
Right. So, you do commence, and you would normally do that, but if there is a rare case, you can look at that, something like that, where it's just like a fluke and there was no intention behind it, which does happen in places. And that's why they put that in there, so a student isn't automatically expelled for a year who just happened to, you know, be hunting with his cousins over the weekend and not even think about it.
Or drive his parents' car.
And not realize, yeah, yeah. Things like that, so that they aren't automatically, but generally, it is an automatic one-year expulsion, but they do allow for you to look at in weird situations, so that that student isn't automatically.
Other questions?
So, this isn't really a question, it's just kind of a review, just from my own brain and also for the benefit of Brenda and others. So, the first part of this was that we looked at our behavior codes, right? And we, we looked at those, and we came up with a different policy for that, which aligns with our positive behavior support policy, and we got rid of our, what I like to call be good in school policy, right? So, we got rid of that, and we adopted PBS. We kind of aligned our behavior. This is the second part of that. This is the suspensions and expulsions. Is that in line with whatever?
Is my understanding?
I just want to make sure that I'm understanding. So, we got rid of the policy that was outdated and updated that with PBS, and now we're kind of doing the same thing with suspensions and expulsions.
Right.
And kind of aligning those to what others have done.
Right, and a lot of our language, there's a lot of protection around special ed students, and we hadn't really updated our policy to incorporate things that by law we have to do, and so there was a need to really get that in, so it was agreeing with state and federal laws.
Not that we weren't complying.
No, we were complying, but our, if you just read our policy, we didn't really spell that out in our policy. So, this is doing that now.
Yeah.
So, one other question, and this is just, perhaps I haven't gotten through policies, and you guys can set me straight. At what point do you refer to the authorities for criminal behavior?
And the school board doesn't do that. That's more coming from administration.
Well, right, we being you.
Do it right away.
And immediately, usually, if they feel there's anything that might.
Is there a policy that calls out to that?
Yeah.
Or is it just assumed as part of?
No, it says that somewhere that if the student engages in criminal behavior, you can contact authorities or something.
But that's one of the policies we're actually abandoning with this one, isn't it?
No, not necessarily. That's more like building level or.
If there's criminal behavior.
Criminal, yeah.
You can always refer to police, if it's something that you, as a private citizen, would be calling the police about. We have every right, as school staff members, to have the same protection as you have. You know, students enter the schoolhouse doors, they do not lose their rights as citizens. Same for teachers. If you enter schoolhouse doors and a student assaults you, we may say, we're not, you know, we don't want to bring charges, but that individual teacher can say, "You know what? I do." And so, they have the right to always file that complaint. We are working on a document, though, calling it, I think, for lack of a better term, behavior across the grade level. So, it's taking some key behaviors that we find that are more frequently reported for discipline reasons, talking about what they may look like at a kindergarten level versus middle school level versus high school level, and then what supports to be put in place for kids who exhibit these types of behaviors, and then what are some possible, the possible range of consequences. It's not an all-inclusive list, and it very clearly states it's not an all-inclusive list, but just so that parents looking at, and they have a document that they can go to and say, "Okay, so, fighting at kindergarten looks like this, and over here, it looks like this at the middle school level." Well, that really makes sense because fighting for kindergarteners is, "I don't like you." Looks a little different than middle school, high school level, right?
So, Teresa, I think then, back to Brenda's question, do we have anything like that formalized today?
As of today, no. We are in the process of working on attaching it to the protocol.
Our handbooks, though, do have some of that language in them, especially at the middle school and high school level. It spells out what they do in these situations.
We go to law enforcement and legal things every single year, like staff, ORI, or all of us. We follow the guidelines every time.
Do we know when that, when do you anticipate having that done?
It is going for an initial review by the wellness committee in September. It's on the agenda for that, this one. I did a preliminary review of the grade levels that I had, so looking for.
So, like by second semester, apparently?
I would bet that you're going to see it as, as an addition to our policy probably by October, November.
Oh, great. Okay.
And I think part of our reason for doing that is the first bullet on page one, where it says, "A pupil may be suspended for disobeying school rules." We wanted more definition around that. So, we want it to be very clear that fighting can be disobeying school rules. Fighting can, I mean, it's always disobeying school rules. When it's suspendable is really, needs further clarification by administration. So, that's why, I believe, if I remember correctly, that's kind of part of why it came.
Other questions? Everybody's good?
It's not a question, it's just a comment, that this took an amazing amount of work for both Teresa and Deb and lawyers and everybody who's worked on it, so, and it's, it's nice to see that effort, that collaborative effort, because it is a solid.
You feel better than what we had?
Yeah.
Good.
Be good policy, yes, I do. I think it was time. I think it was time. I'm sure there's some other policies that we could look at, which were dated from, you know, 1980, but this one was last reviewed, I think, in 2002. So, it was timed, and, so, thank you, because it looks great.
Excellent. Anything else on that one? Good, all right. 8C, discussion on topics for joint board meeting with village.
Okay, and the other thing, besides just topics, I'll update you a little bit on the school resource officer issue, but location, the community center isn't available, and I know when we were supposed to have our meeting in June, we talked about actually having it here instead of the IC Step Room, but, and that was kind of the plan, I just kind of wanted to get a, we need to kind of set that, and wondered how the board felt about that. As far as where to have it, in. As far as where to have it in the district.
Can we all fit here?
We're going to have to.
And I would like the table set up so we're looking at each other. Cause you know, it's a joint board meeting as opposed to what we do here.
Like us against them.
You know, if we could set it up so that, you know, and I think we could probably do that in this room. But if not, I know the high school library had come up at one point. I don't know that there's a large common area there really. I guess in that center area we could move the tables, but then I don't know where everybody else would sit or whoever shows up. I would like to see if we could do it in here. I don't know. Otherwise, what's our next largest fix?
Auditorium. I don't think we want an auditorium. It seems like too big for.
Well, and then it'd be tough to set it up where we're looking at each other, you know?
I would advocate for here because it's set up to videotape and people know that it's here, but.
No, I think we can make it work.
You know, if we set the tables up here. So.
Okay.
Set it up there without objection? Excellent. So give us a location.
And then we need to come up with some topics. And I know we've kind of generated some topics, like kind of similar topics over and over. But as I mentioned in my updates, I spoke with Dave Ross about kind of the resource officer. And there, with, that really is at the finance committee level, it's not gone to the full board. So it's not really ready to be talked about by the boards. And they would kind of like to know what our board is, you know, we, the board in January approved $40,500 towards the resource officer. And even if it's 65% share rather than 75%, it's still over that amount. So I think their feeling is before they move it on, they'd like to know how our board really, you know, what is the financial commitment by our board before they discuss it further.
Well, since that time, we've talked about how that money can be used differently for security. And the board, or the building entrances is one area. You know, the, the idea of having a resource officer, I think there's a lot of qualities to it, a lot of advantages to it as well. The question is whether or not we feel that our building's security should be cleaned up first. I mean, I'm just kind of thinking aloud here, but you know, at this point, we were so far apart. And even going to 65%, that's significantly more than what we had approved. And now we'll have a couple of our buildings entries secured. And we have this money kind of earmarked in our budget, I believe annually. So, you know, I'm kind of thinking, personal thoughts here is that we just hold off on the resource officer for now. Again, we're considerably apart in what we've approved and what they're willing to do it for. It's not something that we have to have right now because they are providing it as a service and we don't wanna take advantage of that. But I think again, having the physical security cleaned up maybe in advance of having a resource officer come on. I don't know, that's just my thoughts. Any other thoughts, Mary?
Well, we added social work if I'm not correct, correct? And I think part of the impetus or my thought on that was that hopefully we will be doing more now. I don't know if that social work is going to be allocated at all to high school, no. I think we may wanna think about where our allocation of resources are because we took money from a high school resource and put it into a different allocation. And so again, it's kind of that long-range planning and that long-range vision. If we're gonna be calling Officer Kroger every other day, then perhaps we should think about how we can lessen that. And that's not to say that the needs of Rachel aren't important, I'm not saying that. What I am saying is that if we said $40,000 is what we need to help the safety of the high school, then could we have some resource go to kind of help that and target that instead of having? And again, it's, it's not to take away from the needs of our younger kids, but the issue is, we're gonna keep asking. We're not, see what I mean, we're not really thinking through or planning that.
And we still have that $40,000 for the resup. I mean, we didn't really allot it for anything this year because it was kind of up in the air. The $40,500 is still.
So we didn't use it on like the IC or?
No, that was actually project money, the IC door.
Oh, it was?
We just decided in the maintenance schedule, that was something we, you know, we could afford to do with the $130,000 project money and.
Rachel, did you?
I just wanna comment, the, it actually is helping the high school because Carol Nichols will no longer have to come to us at all for K through five. Her time can completely be spent middle school, high school. So she was spread across five buildings and now she can completely dedicate.
She handles emergencies for the other buildings.
So, yeah, so.
So they should have an increased allocation. That doesn't matter to me, the person, I don't care about the name, I care more about the allocation, right? And so I think it would be good for us to spend a year to collect data on that or even a half a year. Come back together and see, are we calling the officer less? And maybe that's too short of a turnaround time for Carol to work for magic or any social worker to work for magic. But again, I think going with that theory of, and Wellness has talked a lot about this, right? Like that whole positive behavior support mentality of, we're doing things to support kids to be successful instead of punishing kids when they're not successful. And so to do that, we need to be a visible presence in the school. And that's not necessarily a police officer, that's a support person that can help get kids. It goes back to that whole theory that if a kid is acting out, they're doing it because they have an unmet need or they have something going on for them that is creating that. And so we need to figure out what that is, fix it and move on and be successful. So I'd like to see that, those funds be used in a more proactive way as opposed to a punishment or punitive way. Because again, it aligns with the wellness policy that we've already, the behavior code that we passed last time, the bully policy that we have in place, and now the suspension and expulsion policy even aligns to that PBIS model that we've adopted.
You said PBIS that time?
How I said PBIS, sorry.
I always feel like I'm in school when I say PBIS, okay. No, that, I mean, that, that makes a lot of sense too. Particularly if we can continue to do the physical security through other budget. So then the next question is how do we prioritize and organize those funds?
Well, one thing is the IC was a pretty easy, low-cost fix because just of how it was set up. Where I think everyone recognizes the middle school and high school to have a security entrance is going to take, it's not going to be fitting under $8,000 of the project money. You know, just because there's gonna be actual, some actual construction needed and we don't have costs for that. And that is going to be probably a much larger expense in comparison to the IC.
Did we do buzzers and cameras? Did we get a price quote on, that's what all of our schools have. And to me, it seems much cheaper than building a construction project, but.
Well, we talked about that, but I guess I don't know. I thought that was still gonna be a component of what we were doing.
The only thing we have as a buzzer system right now is the student parking lot area, if I understand right.
Right, we have a camera and a buzzer so that someone could let the kids in the back line so we can keep that secure, but the front is wide open.
I just think it's cheaper than doing construction.
But then you have to have somebody staffed to buzz them in, correct?
Yeah, you always have a secretary in the office who's the buzzer, I mean, the secretary, the high school office has several secretarial staff.
So are the doors just unlocked then between 7:30 and 8:15 or something and then they get locked down?
Yeah.
Well, we had talked about that before and I guess I don't know where it ended up. Are you doing calisthenics up there, Rachel?
Yeah, I just didn't want us to forget about the ELC. Because ELC doesn't have a secure entry either. And so, and that's gonna cost more, I would think, than an easy $8,000. So I just wanted that on the record that that's also another building of concern for getting in.
Absolutely. Now this had gone through buildings and grounds and Gary, I see you're here tonight. Do you remember where the, that discussion ended up? Cause we did talk about cameras and buzzers. And then we went to this construction of an actual, I forget the name, but it's the.
Like a controlled entrance.
It's the controlled entrance. How did, where did we leave the cameras and buzzers?
It's kind of like, nobody really knows who wants to monitor this stuff. We could put cameras and buzzers in each of the entryways, but we have not been able, and I would be on my scope to ask a secretary or something to buzz people in. There are high schools, 300s, people coming in there. You know, other than to try to funnel people through, through the officer and that's essentially what we do at the IC. Now, we could put a, at the ELC, we could put a camera buzzer in, just like we did 600 or any of those new doors, there are children or somebody who would have to watch them. Which would be another issue.
Can you just clarify for me, hundreds of people come into the high school between 8:30 and 3?
Yes.
That are not teaching staff that are.
Correct.
Who's coming into the high?
We take every single person's money for food service. So people come in all day long, write checks out to us.
Parents are coming in.
Oh, yeah.
That's where you're right here.
When they sell, when the band sells their tickets, there'll be people lined up.
So who do they go to though? Do they go to the secretary? I mean, obviously there's some staff there that they're reporting to, right?
Carrie Thomas, isn't it? Doesn't she normally take most of that?
No, I mean, there's a box that parents come in and then we answer questions. When they come in, they come into our office and say they're going down to the music office to buy tickets for whatever event we have going on. And then there's just people coming and going, social workers, outside agencies and.
There's open cameras.
People trying to sell us stuff every day, textbook.
Well, I guess my answer to that is just, again, I mean, I think that there's secretarial staff in there. I guess I'd like to look into it because that's what every Madison school does. And I can't imagine that Mount Horev High School has more people or less people visiting than Memorial High School. And we buzz them in. I mean, I just think it might be a more cost prohibitive. And frankly, it might be.
Less cost prohibitive.
Less cost prohibitive and also more safe, to be honest with you. If you have to buzz someone in, you need a visual look at that person and you, you know. And you use a key code, so staff were coming in and out regularly, just use that key code. So you don't have to buzz them and you just buzz in the strangers, so to speak, right?
Well, maybe that's something, Deb, I don't know if you'd be able to talk to your admin council about it.
And we have a little bit last year, that was kind of a discussion, I think, that saw that took place before I came last year.
Right. I mean, one of the biggest issues is if, if Maureen, for example, has to sit and buzz and then she can't do anything else, she can't leave her station and I need her to go everywhere and everything. Same thing with Kara Thomas. And then, so who does that go to if they're not sitting there, me? And then, so then I have to watch the cameras or what if, what if Maureen buzzes in somebody who is dangerous and she doesn't know? So they have a lot of worries about, you know, am I gonna profile? So that dude was wearing a camouflage jacket and am I not supposed to let him in? Then who makes that decision, does she come and get me? So they have lots of worries about how that might work. I know it works in other places, but I, there's, I think a lot of things.
But explain to me how a safe entrance is different. Maybe that's where I'm confused because, so if we build a safe vestibule or whatever for people to come in, isn't there still somebody who has to open the door for them? Or am I confused about that?
No, no, they come, there's one door, there's one door that's open. Gary and I met with some people to give us some ideas on what we could do to make it, to make it a better entrance. One door is always open and it comes in and it just funnels to the office. So everyone must come in the office, once they're in the office. If it's wide open the way it is now, people come in and go random places. So if they come into the office, then we can determine where they need to go, who can help them, whatever.
So there has to be a person in that office?
Well, there's usually someone in the office.
And all I'm suggesting is that instead of having it be a physical structure that somebody has to walk through, that person who's always in the office, whoever that is, buzzes instead of having them physically be funneled. That's all I'm saying, I'm not sure that I'm saying anything different.
No, I think, I, I'm following you perfectly. And I think to Mary's point, if we did the buzzers and the camera, then you can essentially neutralize a threat before they get in the building. If they come into the office and they are a threat, then the people in the office are in trouble, right?
We're in trouble no matter what, because we're always gonna be the front line. I just don't know how.
Well, you can mitigate that risk a bit by having to buzz somebody in, I think is your point. So I think it's worth looking at.
Or somebody can bring an explosive package in and set it there and use it.
Yeah, so, and we don't need to debate this all night, but maybe if you wouldn't mind, talk to the admin council and we can put together, you know, get their input, collective input. And then we can discuss it again. Because I mean, it, Mary's right, if we can avoid all this construction by buzzers and cameras, maybe there's training. And what I'm hearing, you know, Stephanie say is more procedural changes as opposed to any new staff at first blush. I mean, that could be different, but. It, is that okay?
Oh, yeah, we can, we'll talk about it.
Mary, is that kind of what you were going after?
Yeah, and I guess I'd also be curious, because I think we started the new meal program where you can pay for it online recently, you know, where you can go and add money into your lunch account. So hopefully there aren't as many people coming and just putting it in a box.
They don't, they don't like to pay the.
The credit card fee.
So it just, it just dawned on me that we are still on discussion topics for the joint board.
Yeah, we kind of got a topic, I just wanted to give you some background information on the school resource officer topic.
Holy cats, talk about tangents.
So we don't really have any topics, because we really aren't gonna discuss this one yet. Because the village board isn't really ready to discuss that even, so.
Right, and then crossing guards, we've got addressed. Does anybody have, we had four last time, we had the resource officer, crossing guard, the recreation center. And there was one other.
I think Peter wanted to talk about painting crosswalks or something about crosswalks and safety. And I guess I would like to talk about if there's any future building projects in, that would impede the ability of our students to get to the school, that we know about that and that we're kept abreast of that, like what happened this year. Again, I doubt that's gonna be an issue in the future, but I don't know when they're gonna be ripping up the road, you know, in front of the middle school. And if they are, we need to know that or, because it seemed like this year, we knew about the construction, but we didn't realize that it would be done.
How late it was gonna go. Yeah, it could be Spelman next year or Garfield or.
Or there might be a tree that they're taking out that we don't. So I guess I would like to just have some facilities conversation around that or just buildings and grounds or whatever it is, students' safety.
Last time, when we were supposed to meet on June 30th, it was canceled. It was update on the indoor recreational facility study, intersection of Eighth and Garfield and in conjunction with that, the crossing guard at Eighth and Garfield. Village Street projects and update on school resource officer. And then the request process, kind of like how we want that.
How we submit all our requests.
Yeah, came in, yeah.
Yeah, that was, yeah, that was actually coming from Dave Becker, asking that we formalize our requests.
That was the list then, for the meeting that was canceled.
So do we still wanna talk about what it would take to get a set of lights at the corner of Garfield and Eighth? That's probably a conversation that's not a bad one for us to have.
Well, especially if we've got our crossing guard, you know, quasi-directing traffic. Because if you've ever tried to cross there, it's like.
Well, and now it's not a fire drill, you know, with Tammy hired. Hopefully that actually gives us some time to figure out what our options are.
Okay, so we could have that intersection, what about the indoor recreational facility update?
Is there any update on that?
Yeah, we could give an update there.
Okay, and then pass like maybe 2015 Village Street projects that might affect. And then the village, school district request process.
Anything else? Does anyone have anything?
I just wanna confirm, so they're looking for a commitment on the resource officer. So do we need to have an agenda item for the next meeting to discuss whether or not that 40K that's budgeted is gonna be allocated or not?
Well, right now they are significantly, they're requesting quite a bit more than what we budgeted. So right now, no, there's.
The 40,000 wouldn't do, we wouldn't get an officer, so. And right now, like I said, they're, that's still tied up in finance and until they know, you know, if we're willing to go up with our financial resources towards it, it's probably kind of stagnant right now as far as moving forward.
It sounds like we need to regroup too, to make sure things haven't changed on our end. Because we've learned a lot and there's a lot of other initiatives that can be had, that can leverage that money. I think there's still certainly a need there from a security perspective. And it's not, Mary, I forget the, you'd use two words to describe the resource officer. Punitive or? Yeah, and the goal was not to have a resource officer. Yeah, and the goal was not to have a resource officer that was going to, you know, grab somebody by the collar if they were caught with a pack of cigarettes in their locker. But a lot of, a lot of the things that actually social worker could be doing for us, which is where I think you were headed with that. And then also, because Officer Kroger is at the high school, I've been told 20 hours a week, or with working on district issues, 20 hours a week, then it would just simply provide her an office, you know, on campus someplace, so. Anyway. Anything else for the joint meeting?
Did we ever have a job description for that?
I saw a draft, I could try to dig that up again. There was a draft, it was not official, it was just something that was floating around. I don't think we had an official one.
I didn't see an official one.
Yeah. I can try to find that, or I'll send it to Deb, and she can send it out to everybody.
That may be some of where my kind of wondering, not knowing what it is.
Sure.
Just assuming it's the same thing she's been doing, and.
Right, right. Well, a lot of it would be, at least 20 hours a week, would be doing the same thing. So, and that's kind of the, that's part of how I had originally come up with the numbers of what we would pay, versus what the village would pay. And again, I had calculated 60% of nine months' full salary, if you follow that. So, and that was at the guidance of Chief Ella. I mean, that's the way a lot of the other districts around us do it. And so when they came back with 75% of the total number, plus a cruiser, which was unexpected cost. I mean, that just blew us out of the water, so. Okay, anything else for 8C?
Do we want to talk about the need to meet? Because I know that came up at an earlier meeting, that they were wondering if we need to meet. So maybe some, I, some definition around why.
That actually was on one of our agendas, maybe not this last one, but was the purpose of the meeting. Yeah, that'd be good to visit.
And I don't know if we have, I mean, update on Fitness Center is coming up under Old Business, but I don't know if that's a need for us, because I know that had to go before their plan commission or something. So I don't know if that has any, if there's any merit to craft it, you know?
Well, we can add to this as well, if you email Jackie or Deb, you know, we can certainly add agenda items to it.
And we will be meeting again before that.
Okay. 9A, update on this, to solution for the primary center water issue.
Okay. This issue has just kind of expanded. Initially, when they reviewed the project, they were going to regrade the front yard, dig up the plantings in front of the music room, and thought that was kind of the issue, and thought that would resolve it. And then, it was recognized that there's actually kind of a vacated space adjacent to the music room. And when people looked at that, it appeared that water was coming into there. And so then, we had the engineering firm and also Fendor come back and look at that. And initially, I think there was a thought that it was just coming in through that area, but now there's a possibility that might be coming from a roof drain. And so there, it's still kind of a work in progress. They came and put a camera down through the roof drain, and one of the roof drains is blocked, but they think they can clear that out, so they can't see exactly how that might be contributing to it right now. So, I don't know, Gary, Rachel.
The roof drain, we went up with a camera Friday, and then 42 feet down, there's a plug in. You run in the water, we couldn't move any further. So that roof drain comes down, we thought that it exited out and went north and saw daylight down at the Academy Bowl. And it turns out, they believe it runs east and west, goes under the building, and ties into a pile that's on, and faces to the west side of the building. But that roof drain is definitely plugged in, if it's breached underneath that building, when that water comes down, that's going somewhere. Now, I think it used to go into the plug-in. But since they jackhammered that vault, made that area for the lift there, they might have inadvertently created a pathway for that stuff to migrate into that room. So right now, we put a sump in there, and we're going to catch it, and we're going to intercept it and get it out of there. But I just got a call from Erin from Fendor this afternoon, and they're coming out at 8:30 in the morning, and they're going to try and jet that drain out. If they can jet it out, we can get it open, you know, water's going to follow this path resistance. But there's other things they can do, they can sleeve it, or if it's completely collapsed underneath there, you aren't going to jackhammer your torso, you would plug and abandon it and create another exit, to a cover or something on the roof. But these are things that, it really looks like this is the issue this time.
Keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah, I hope so.
What we thought was.
It'd be less invasive to do that, I believe. If we can jet that thing out and get that opened up, and then see where everything's going. They come, oh, no, they're coming out at 8:30 in the morning to jet that out, so. And then we'll chase the camera down after them, and see where it's going to.
Excellent, thank you for that. Okay, anything else to that?
No.
That about wraps it up, let's keep our fingers crossed.
We kind of thought we knew what we were doing, and this kind of change in it, so we're.
And none of this is due to the reconstruction, so we're going to have to pay for whatever is done, right?
Well, I don't think that's totally been decided. I mean, this ex-vacated space was there before.
It's the old prop room, or it used to be the old music practice rooms, way back in the day. So that room, they just shut it off. It's a room you can walk in, and it's the old practice rooms.
They actually poured another floor on top of that, created one up on there, there's new expanded metal and lightweight up there. That's, that was the key. I don't know where I was at, but I never remembered seeing that thing. It is behind the grate. I wonder where they put that vault. I knew they had built a wall there, but I thought it was adjacent to an exterior wall, that's not, it's an interior wall. So we went in there and saw it, and sure enough, you could see where water, the path had changed, and there's a bunch of limestone aggregate and stuff that had washed down into this, into like a footing area. And all of this footing and the chase ended up going right behind that wall in the music room there, and migrated through the, through the wall. So it really looks like it, it never was coming from the outside. You know, that roof drain, that compromised roof drain is probably where that's coming from, that explains a lot of it.
I don't see us being on the hook for this.
But we don't know that.
We don't know, but if it's a roof drain, and we just paid 10.5 million dollars to renovate the whole building, I would think stuff like that would have been checked out. I don't know, that's just me, but who knows? I mean, it's also 1918 building, and regardless of how much renovation you do, there's always going to be something.
36 part right there, you know, the Chinese in this, but still, that's, you know, 67 buildings.
Yeah, yeah.
I just have one other question, since Gary's here, but maybe you guys all know this. What happened with the mold issue? Was that drywall replaced, so that we don't have to worry about it?
No, because, well, the mold can be killed, and there is some stuff in there, and we can kill it and get rid of it. But we didn't want to do anything, so we found out what the cost was. Because otherwise, and the teachers, or Rachel.
I'm a teacher.
Okay, she's not in there. So there's not students or teachers near that?
And before anybody ever gets in, and we're going to do monitoring, we're going to monitor that.
The air pod?
Theo will come in and do that, and we'll, we'll.
So we moved them out.
Thank you.
Until we can figure out what it is and how we're going to remedy it. Otherwise, we're going to just keep replacing the drywall. It kind of rains.
Well, seeing the water in there the last time we had it, I don't, I mean, in the middle of teaching, she can have a rush of water.
Right.
It's not safe for her, so we moved her.
Yeah, okay. All right, 9B, consideration of developing WASB resolution? Seems like we just did this.
Well, they're due September 15th, so.
We didn't have them last time, didn't we?
Last year, we had two of them last year, but.
Yeah, does anybody have anything that they want to throw out there for resolution? When are they due?
September 15th.
Oh, so if you don't have it prepared tonight, it's not happening.
It's not going to happen, yeah. But we did talk about it last board meeting, too. So we knew we were going to be kind of up and ready to go today.
Okay, all right, that's an easy one. 9C, update on the Fitness Center.
We are just kind of working on some, I know I signed papers to go to the village, but we're working on a few little contract issues, and, which I have sent to, we're kind of working with our school attorney, and Joe. And there were some things that we needed included, and our attorney's just going to prepare an addendum, because they weren't in the original contract. And now I haven't heard from Joe since last Wednesday. I sent them that information, I haven't heard back, so I'm kind of waiting. And then, the contract is kind of, we should have that done maybe by the end of this week. Because that's really all we need to do, is add an addendum with some legal requirements.
Can you verify then, I don't know if Chalka's looking at it or who, but can you have them verify the not-to- exceed, that there's no outs in there, unless it is signed by the district?
Sure, it's actually Bill, maybe, that's.
Oh, Bill's doing it, okay.
Yep.
So if you can just verify that, because I know it's in there, but what I don't, I don't know how to read that stuff, it's like Greek. You know, if there's an out.
Okay.
That we need to be aware of.
I'll talk to Bill about that.
Okay.
But I have, I kind of, and then, some of the music staff that use that area had some other concerns, which I forwarded to Joe today and just asked, and they'd like to chance to sit down, maybe talk about some of those. So.
Okay.
I have two questions. One is the legal fees, is that part of the 250 that we agreed to go toward this? Because I know that these fees add up very quickly. So that's one question, I'm assuming that that's not part of this 250. And then, the second question is, does it go to the planning commission next? Once you get the contract worked out, then it goes to the Village Board?
I actually think they've sent the plans to the planning commission already. We're just kind of working out the.
The other details.
Other details, yeah.
And where do the legal fees come from, or that, is that part of the 250?
That, I guess, has to be decided by the board. I mean, that.
Right now, it's just a fun 10 expense.
Right now, it's just part of our regular legal, I mean, we get a bill every month from our attorneys.
But I guess that's a question, then, is that part of the 250? Because we wouldn't be incurring legal fees if we weren't doing this project. So I'm assuming that that's going to come off of that 250.
We should track that, I would think. And at the same time, once contracts are in place, there shouldn't be. A lot more.
Yeah, I can look and see, I'll have to pull, because there might have even been something from last month. I review them, I'll have to look and see. But it's been Bill that I, that has worked on.
Okay. Any other questions? I was told that there's been over $100,000 raised locally for equipment for that room already. So, pretty incredible. It's a bunch of the clubs that are in town. So, if that is accurate, that's pretty darn impressive. Anything else on 9C? Okay, any citizens' comments, Gary?
His idea was approved by the planning.
No.
Last Wednesday, recently.
Thank you, Gary. You're hired.
Looking around. I have no comments.
Future agenda items, any future agenda items, anyone? Mary, Brenda, Leah, no? All right, schedule the next meetings is correct.
Yes, one thing I would like to point out, which it goes beyond our dates on here, but the second October meeting will need to be the last Monday in October, is that correct, Scott? So we can, because Finance will meet a week later than normal. Due to, October 15th is when we find out what our state aid is, and we are able to really define what those numbers look like, and get a definite budget number. And then that goes to Finance at the following Monday meeting. And so then, that pushes our board meeting, our second board meeting in October, to the last Monday in October, so that really the board will be approving the budget at that point. Because we will actually know what our revenues, what those numbers from the state look like.
So the 27th?
Yeah.
So we'll have it presented.
I don't know, Scott, if you have anything you want to add to that, or?
No, it's just the timing of when October 15th is with the Finance and our second board meeting in October.
I think we did that last year as well.
We did it last year, back in the spring, we addressed it at the Finance Committee, because I wanted everybody to be aware of moving forward, as people look at their calendars months ahead, that people were aware of what this looked like.
So Finance will be October 20th, and then the next week would be the board meeting to approve the budget.
Got it, so the 20th.
Yeah, and I'll send a reminder, I just kind of wanted people to be aware of that. I know at Finance, we talked about it, but. The actual date.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Thank you, Diana and Brenda, all in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed. Have a good night.